Start recording. Got it. Welcome to the Hampton Falls School Board meeting. As Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to an executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are a providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities via video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate this meeting through dialing the following phone number 646-876-9923 and the webinar ID is 974-552-83962 or by clicking on the following website, which is listed on the agenda. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions also have been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body if the meeting, during the meeting, if there are problems with the, with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at r evans@saup21.org. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note, all votes will be taken during this meeting. Should be done by a roll call vote. Rhonda, will you take a roll call attendance?
Greg Parrish.
Here with family in and out.
Jason Parius.
Here, family in and out.
Jill Swayze.
Here, family in and out.
And John Bailey. I have the roll call taken.
Hey. Bear with me for a minute. Okay, first item is the election of a board vice chair. Do we have a nomination or recommendation, any conversation or discussion regarding vice chair from the board? Seeing there's no discussion, can I get a nomination for board, for the vice chair of Hampton Falls School Board?
I'll make a motion to nominate John Bailey for the position of vice chair.
Yep, a second nomination.
Any discussion?
You'll be great.
Rhonda, can we take a roll call vote?
Yes, Jason Parius.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Olbustee.
And Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Hey, I have that vote recorded.
Great.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next item is board vacancy and possible appointment to that. Now, Rhonda, do you have special instructions here, or should I just speak to what I know of how this is going to proceed?
We were just going to, whenever we do the meeting in person, I believe that normally, if you have more than one applicant or interested person in the position, while the board conducts their interviews, don't correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they've always asked the other people to step out of the room. This being on Zoom, what we thought we would do, if, if the parties don't object, we would place them on hold while you interviewed one person, and then we would do that with each of them in turn. And I believe the board would be asking like the same questions and everything, but the meeting is in public, and we just feel that that's a little more fair and considerate to everybody.
Yes, that has to be agreed to. That's exactly what we talked about. That has to be agreed to by all three of the people that you'll interview, because it is a public meeting. But yes, that's the way we've, we've structured them in other school districts in the past.
I am fine with that. How do we get, do we, do the other three, the three candidates who are, who have submitted a letter of interest to, they need to acknowledge that, they're okay with that somehow? If so, how do we do that?
I'll go ahead and bring each of them in now as panelists. And then once they, if they're all okay with that, we will just, you guys will pick who you're going to interview first, and I'll put the other two on hold, and then we'll just kind of rotate that based on who you're interviewing at the time.
Okay, so for the three candidates, first of all, the board would like to thank you for showing interest in filling out this vacated board seat. You, whoever is elected or chosen or appointed to this, you will fill out the remaining part of this year through March, depending on when our March meeting is versus when the town meeting is in March. So this is not till the end of the school year, it's just the remaining part up to the town vote. Per, per the conversation we just had, what will happen is we are going to interview each of you. Rhonda will put the two of you who are not in the interview on hold. We will ask the same questions of each of you, so in all fairness to you, you will not be asked a different question. And with that said, I think with the board's permission, would like to do is interview the candidates as we received their letters of interest. And so the interview order, what I would like to suggest would be Anthony Lane first, then Ellen Cristo, and finally Barbara Goodman. Any objections from the board on that?
And is it, I think, is it, we want to ask, is it okay with each of the candidates that we place you on, on hold while we conduct these interviews? Is that okay with you?
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
The one last thing I'd like to mention before we begin the interview process, this is my third time we've done this. The first time we had two candidates, last time we had one, this time we have three candidates. I was concerned about a potential tie vote, so I've done a little research here. Per our Hampton Falls School Board policy, section B code BBC, the title of that policy is board member or district officer resignation. If we have a tie vote, or we are unable to come to a majority agreement on a candidate, the vacancy shall be filled in accordance with New Hampshire RSA statute 197:26 and New Hampshire RSA statute colon 67, or 671:33. Basically, what these two statutes indicate is if we cannot come to a majority vote on a single candidate tonight, it would fall onto the select board and the selectmen to then appoint a school board member to fill this vacancy until the next annual meeting. What that process is, I am not sure, but I did want to share that with everyone. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? Okay. Rhonda, why don't we start with Anthony and go from there?
Okay, so Ellen and Barbara, I'm going to place each of you on hold. Okay, they're both on hold right now.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Anthony? Anthony, first of all, thank you, we appreciate your time. We'll, we'll try to be as expeditious about that, as expeditious about this as we possibly can.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Any questions for Anthony?
Greg, are we gonna go use that template that you had passed out? Is that what you?
You can, yeah, you can do that, or if you've come up with your own questions, that's fine. If you have your own questions, just remember, we should ask that of each candidate.
Right, okay.
So if you want to start, Jay, with a question, go ahead.
Sure, I'm gonna read off that, that list. I thought that was a good start for, for Anthony and give him a chance to, to speak about some of why he should be here. And so I'd like to start with Anthony, in your words, I wonder if you could just tell us about yourself and, you know, what your interest is in this, in this position for, for the school boy.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks, Jason. So again, Anthony Lang, I'm really thankful for the opportunity to speak to all of you today. I've lived in town now for seven years. I have a fifth grader and a third grader at Lincoln Acreman. They've only been at Lincoln Acreman, they love it there. I have been active in the town. I ran for planning board last year, narrowly lost by about 25 votes. One of the things that I know that I bring to the board is the ability to reach across to non-school families and get them vested and aligned in with the school board, gaining trust rapport with some of those individuals. And one thing that I've, I've always wanted to bring to any board that I serve in is viewing anyone that comes into a board meeting as who they are in that day. There's historically in the town, a lot of, you know, what happened in the past. So really, I'm not from New England, my wife went to Winnicott, and I know a lot of folks in town from that relationship, but I do bring a different perspective. From the Midwest to the South, I've been in different areas, I've seen different school systems, and my corporate experience has been heavily rooted in corporate education. For Verizon Wireless, I spearheaded a move from in-person to virtual instructor-led training, which is very apt for kind of the situation we are in today. Also saw the shift from instructional education to experiential learning, which aligns directly with what we've heard from 21st century education. So I've seen why it's important to bring some of these techniques into lower education to prepare everyone for the ability to be successful when they get out into a changing corporate world. If there's more to that, really, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. That's good. Joe or John, do you have a question?
My only question, Anthony, and the last of all candidates, is can you describe, or do you have any past board experience, either public or private?
I don't have any board experience. I have served in core groups and different organizations that served as a board-like experience, but in terms of an appointed board, no.
Okay. Hey, Anthony, so obviously, we're operating under some pretty strange environments these days. So sort of certain immediate pandemic aside, what do you see as some of our really perceived challenges that, you know, LAS has faced or been facing since your experience here, or things that you might anticipate coming up?
Yeah, great question. So really, when I first came on, it was all about space, really getting behind the fact that, that we had an exceptional education, actually educational institution that was just bursting at the seams. That, all that came at a great time. Had we known what we know today, there might have been a little less, you know, trouble in that, but now we have adequate space. Now it's about looking at how we can creatively use that, how we can make sure that we're future-proofed for any similar changes or interruptions. So I really do see more from, you know, our town coming in as we go through this to say, what are the clearly laid out objectives? What are the clearly laid out potential consequences? And really show the town that, and the school community, that we're not just existing in the situation that's handed us to today, but we've learned from the fact that the only constant is change, and that we have to really be prepared and really the ability to look around the corner and identify things like the potential for school vouchers to become something that the government at large passes, and how can we take something like that and use it as an advantage as opposed to a crutch, what we do to use the educational excellence that Lincoln Acreman provides to acquire more students that are unhappy with, with their current situation, and really use this as a beacon in the seacoast to raise the level of all towns, not only in our SAU, but really be an educational standard for the entire state.
Anthony, in the last six or seven years, the primary goal and identity of the board has been addressing the space issues, as you've identified. That is what this board has been focused on, and that is what we have done, it's become our identity. But we've accomplished that. Now, we still have some maintenance issues we need to deal with, but for the most part, we've addressed those space issues. As we move forward as a board, how do you visualize what our identity could or should become and what our focus should be?
Yeah, thanks for that. Really, what it comes down to now is how do we maintain and accelerate where, what we are as a curriculum and what we put out in terms of, you know, if we look at the school as a business, you know, our product is educated, prepared student body that can go into the next level of their education and be the benchmark for those that, and then go into the corporate world and be the benchmark for how to operate as a professional, educated adult. So what we're looking at now is how do we maintain a satisfied teacher community so that we keep that level of excellence up? How do we make sure that everyone in town sees Lincoln Acreman as a place they, they want to send their children? There is some burden of things that have happened to families in town in the past. We have new leadership, we have new board members, so I believe that the identity of the board needs to be one of flexibility, of adaptation, and the ability to clearly and concisely relay that to both the student population and the town at large.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I want to ask about sort of scheduling, but first, I'm not sure I have a question in this one, but more of an observation, because I'm the greenest on the board. And one of the things that really struck me, that I think I was very naive to as a community member, was exactly how interconnected we are with the other districts in our SAU. And I think that what we've had to deal with over these last few months has really highlighted that, and the discrepancies, maybe that's not the right word, but the challenges of, you know, looking and wanting to lead first with our community, but recognizing sort of that we are connected to each other and that there are opportunities to provide value across the SAU. So again, I don't know that I have a question in there, I just, it was something that struck me very starkly over the last few months, and it's more of an awareness that I think there can be a lot of frustrations, and that flexibility that you just spoke to is going to be really important, and maybe a little empathy in there. But another question, the, the scheduling of meetings can be surprisingly consuming, and we meet fairly regularly between our board, the joint board, and then various committees, and they are not always in the evening, as you know with this one, you know, they're often overlapping with the workday or when your kids are around. So do you envision that being problematic with work? We hope to have everybody attentive when they can't, you know, as reasonably as possible.
Yeah, so, I mean, to your first point, I mean, collaboration, I mean, being able to know that, you know, everyone brings something to the table, and while we have, we have a lot that we want to share, we have a lot that we can learn from other surrounding areas. In terms of scheduling, I mean, my day, I'm the project manager for a technology company, we're web design and digital marketing agency. Schedules are my life, and while my schedule is busy, I do have the ability to write my own schedule, and my employer is very flexible to the, to the fact. We have other board members that work in the building for anything from Center for Wildlife to the New Hampshire Historical Society, all the way up to our owner and CEO, who is a board member of the New Hampshire Historical Society. So the, in, in silver text DNA is giving back to town and to state, so I don't see any problem with making time, and I'm willing to make any accommodations within reason.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
If, if you are appointed, you know, as, as I may have mentioned, I'm sure Jay has, there's a steep learning curve, and I'm still very green about how a lot of the board functions and sort of our administrative reach and the governance that we provide. So if appointed, would you be interested in running for the seat so that that learning can, you know, transfer to a longer term?
Yeah, absolutely. My intention, I mean, with running for planning board, that was to get back, that was the seat. You know, I knew, I know Jason well, and I thought that he was the right fit to run for that seat as, and I, you know, know that, you know, we have, you know, members that have been on the board for a while, I want to, you know, I value the fact that we have, you know, a good mix of those of you that are new, that can give me the, I wish I had known this, and then those of you that are experienced that can say, had I done this differently, or hey, here's, you know, Greg, you're great at, you know, RSA, I hear you rifle off RSAs, you sound like you know what they all are, I know that there's some cheat sheets there as well, but, you know, there is a lot there, a mountain of paperwork, I mean, it's very similar. I made the transition recently from working in sales in a telecommunications industry to being a project manager in a web development and digital marketing agency. I had no idea what I was getting in for, but my skills of relationship building, in active listening, in, you know, analytics, analytical thought and logic, were able to assist me in accelerating my learning in that position. So I just came off of learning a lot of new stuff, I'm in the mindset of learning and growing, which is why I made that industry change in the first place, and really looking forward to learning more about, you know, the intricacies of government bureaucracy and, and how, you know, you can, you know, use that to your advantage, or, you know, at least, you know, figure out the right way to do things within the regulation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Anthony? None being asked, I will make the assumption we're done with questioning Anthony. Anthony, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Rhonda, I guess we bring in Ellen now.
Yes, Anthony, I'm going to place you on hold.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Can I ask you a quick question before we bring Ellen in? Or is it too late? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I appreciate us asking them each the same questions, but given that Ellen has some history with the board, I do have some different, you know, a different question for her, I just want to make that clear and make sure that's not a problem.
You know what, Jill, I think that's fine. You know, one of the things I've struggled with when you ask questions like this, having to ask, is the same questions each candidate is, each candidate could answer it different, the question differently, which then may prompt another question for you that may not be asked. I personally am okay with that, and with what you're generally asking to begin with, unless the board objects, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay, Rhonda.
She's in here now, Greg.
She is, okay. Hi, Ellen, thank you. Appreciate you showing interest in filling this seat. Who has a question for Ellen? Jay, do you want to start off?
Sorry, Ellen, you're on mute. For, again, for being here, I was just wondering if you could, in your words, tell us, you know, about your, I guess, your interest in coming back to this position and this role, and in this, in this interesting time that we have going through right now.
Sure. Well, I don't envy any of you right now, because it certainly is a challenging time to be on the board, but I'm reflecting on that for a minute, I'm not sure it's ever not a challenging time to be on the board. I've, you know, I really enjoyed, I spent six years on the board from 2007 to 2013, was chair of it for a few years, and when I saw that there was an opening here, kind of coincided with some time in my life that I have some free time to offer, and thought it might be useful to have somebody who's been on the board before, who's familiar with the budgeting process, curriculum development, you know, and municipal law, that kind of thing. And, you know, frankly, it's, I also look at it from the standpoint of it's, it is a challenging time, and that's exactly the kind of thing I like to dig my fingers into is when something is challenging that I can offer my skill set to help along the way. I think it's, you know, it's an extraordinary time, and I think the, the board has done a phenomenal job so far at navigating this process, because it's been difficult, but I thought perhaps, you know, I could offer my expertise and my former expertise in it, and it might be useful, and frankly, I'm very passionate about LAS, always have been. I've had two kids who have gone through the system here, they've had both what I consider a fantastic education, coming out of LAS, a great foundation that has led them to succeed at Winnicott, and then just in beyond that. So, so for kind of all of those reasons, you know, I believe Hampton Falls, the school here is our crown jewel of our, of our town, and, you know, would like to get back in the process.
Thank you. Ellen, it's Greg. Ellen, the last six or seven years, the identity of the school board's primarily been focused on addressing the space issues at LAS, and that is what we focused on. But we've accomplished that, we still have some maintenance projects to address, but we've accomplished the, the main goal of our, our space needs. Moving forward as a board, how would you visualize what our identity should be and what our focus as a board should be in the coming years, certainly with some of these new challenges we're addressing?
Sure. So I guess my philosophy of the board has always been that it's the core responsibilities are that of fiscal management and educational policy. I think that, you know, right now, because of the, the extraordinary circumstances, there's probably a lot more board involvement in the day-to-day operations, but I think long-term, sort of the transition from the, both dealing with the virus as well as dealing with the construction of the addition, I think there almost needs to be that transition to more policy and fiscal management as the, for the board role.
Okay, thank you. Jill, question?
Sure, hi, Ellen, Jill Swayze, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
So I'll, I'm quite drawn to your experience in the board, but I've also had the experience at times where, and please take this in the voice meant, generalizing, not specifically, but that when people are coming to a position with experience, you have a certain set of expectations on how something's going to go. So I guess I want to ensure, and this is more of a thought than a question, but I want to ensure that, that we are a different board, you know, and times are very different at the moment, that you are bringing your experience in a learning manner and not a defined way to do things. I think that, you know, Jason and I both knew this year, I think collectively, we're feeling out how this new board needs to take shape, and I, I want to be careful that the experience guides us, but doesn't limit us.
Well, I don't think I could express it better than what you just said. So I would say I come in at any new experience, any new job, any new board I get onto, as I'm the person kind of learning. the person kind of learning. And anytime you have a new experience, my approach to it is to that I need to learn first. And I very much would view this as a new experience for me. Yes, I come with, with experience and some expertise, but it was for a prior time. It's not for now. This is an incredibly different time. And that's part of why I was interested in getting involved again, because I view this as a different experience. And, you know, I would look at this as that I'm the newcomer on the, on the board if I were to get this position. You know, yes, I come with someone, I understanding of, you know, for instance, the budgeting process and what, you know, you can and can't do and, you know, curriculum development and how that works and so forth. But everything else is new. So I view this as, you know, almost a new, you know, if I can make the analogy to, you know, my, my profession as an attorney, it's like a new client. I come with the skill set that I already have, help that client or to be part of their problem solving. But it's, I have to learn the new client, right? I have to learn the new circumstances. The, and I, so I would view that as, this would be a new experience for me. I just happen to come with some tools that might be useful.
Great, thank you. Are you intending, and you may not know the answer to this, but are you hoping to join to fill the temporary seat and then vacate for the next election? Or are you considering that there might be some longevity again?
So I'm a firm believer in never say never.
Okay.
When I originally signed up for, for this, I think my, my thought process was that you may be looking for somebody truly interim that could fill the spot until the town had an opportunity to elect somebody to fill that spot. So I, I would view this, as I sit here today, I would tell you that it would not be my plan to run for reelection. And, but, you know, I also don't want to do the never say never kind of thing. But I think sometimes, you know, I experienced this when I was on the board where sometimes it was useful to have somebody fill in for the remainder of somebody's term and, you know, really be interim to help transition to the next person and allow the town to really vote on who they want in their next based on policy and, you know, whoever puts their, their name up.
Great, that's very helpful. And the last question I have, you're, you may remember be familiar with the scheduling requirements of the position. The board does meet with some frequency and we certainly found that that frequency has enhanced a little bit given some, you know, decisions that would have to be made very quickly, given all the work that, you know, our administration was conducting. So given your current work environment and other commitments, I want to make sure that you have the flexibility to respond and be available for those.
The answer is yes, I do.
Great.
And it was actually, you know, part of why I put my name forward at this time was because I did have that flexibility and for, and time to put into the, to the position at the moment.
Great, thank you. Greg, that's all from me.
Okay, thanks Jill. John or Jason, do you have any additional questions?
No. So I just have one question. We know about your past board experience for the school board. I was just curious if you had any other additional board experience, public or private, beyond that?
Yes. I have been on the boards of several charities. I've been their legal counsel and I have been on the board of a company.
Was that a public or a private company?
It was actually a private company.
Okay.
I've worked for both public and private companies, but I've been on the board of a private company.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Anything else, folks? Thanks Ellen, we appreciate it. Rhonda's going to put you back on hold, I think she's calling it.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means, Rhonda, and it scares me to ask.
Are you going to put everybody on hold and, and have a vote right after you finish the interviews or you'll get?
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll, after we interview Ellen, we'll deliberate, I guess, or we'll, we'll discuss this and then we'll, we'll have the vote.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of us.
Thanks Ellen.
Take care.
Thank you.
So Greg, I'm going to bring Barbara in now, but do we, I believe, will, will we take everybody off hold whenever you do, I believe you have to take them off hold when you do the vote? Is that not correct?
We do the vote in public.
This is all public.
Discussion's public as well.
Scott, okay. So yes, Rhonda.
Okay. So I'm bringing Barbara in and once she's done, then we'll bring everybody back in.
Okay.
The rest of you have questions or you just, we're covering it? I remember I was questioned by some others, so I'm just checking. Or maybe you felt you had to get me to talk.
You're doing fine, Jill.
All right.
Are we all set, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Barbara. Thank you for showing interest in the position. We'll, we'll ask you a series of questions and then we will proceed forward with that. Jay, would you like to start, please?
Sure. Hi Barbara, thank you for your interest. I wanted to give you a chance to, in your own words, talk about why you think you're a good fit for this position and really why you, you're, you know, you want to fill this vacancy.
Sure. First of all, thanks for having me. I will say that I don't love talking about myself, but because you've asked me, I will answer the question. And I'm incredibly nervous. And so why I think that I would be a good fit. You know, my career in finance, I think that I have a lot of experience with budgets. I'm very familiar with working with figures and numbers, building budgets, analyzing them, looking at actual two budgets. And if, you know, cost savings initiatives need to come into play, I'm also very familiar with the balancing act of making sure that you're taking care of your employees versus taking care of your shareholders. And in this case, it would be the school versus our taxpayers. And, you know, I've worked with all levels of an organization. I think I work well with people. You know, I'm very passionate about our school and our town. I love it, both of them. I'd love to volunteer and I feel like I just really would like to take the next step and do a little bit more. I am a bit of a quiet person, however, I'm okay with speaking up and asking questions and, you know, being heard in a respectful way. Let's see, I also am kind of a big picture thinker. I like to look at all sides of an issue before making a decision. And I try not to, you know, be snapped to judgments. So overall, I just would really love to be involved more in the school, in the town.
Thank you.
Barbara, it's Greg.
Before we move on, you, you are still, you're a member of the, remind me, the PTO, are you vice chair there right now?
I'm actually the communications director, so I'm the one who does the newsletters.
Okay.
Barbara, it's Greg Parrish. Thank you for being here. Barbara, the last six or seven years, the board's primary goal and identity, if you will, has been the addressing LAS space requirements in the addition. We've accomplished that goal after these, the seven year period. But now we're moving into a new phase of the board. And so what do you see or how do you visualize what the board's identity should be or what its focus should be as the board takes its next steps and walks away from what we've been addressing the last six or seven years?
Sure. Great question. But I don't think you have to live here for very long before you realize that there is a bit of a division in our town. Those are for the school and those are against the school. So I think what I would see is that we should try to, you know, kind of bridge that gap and try to bring the whole town together. I'm not sure how that would be done. However, I feel like I'm kind of in the middle. I never really established one, one side or the other. There is that delicate balance between doing what's best for the school and doing what's best for the town, whether that's through a lot more communication. I think communication is key and bringing two sides together. So I guess that might be the, the best vision that I can come up with at the moment, just to bring the town together.
Okay, thank you. John or Jill, do you have any questions?
Sure. Hi Barbara, how are you?
Good, thanks.
One, I mentioned this earlier to the other candidate, but one of the things I've observed, and this is a little bit more of an observation than a question per se, but I'd welcome a response to it. Given that I'm so new and this has been such a challenging time we've been working in, that I was quite naive to how interconnected the districts in the SAU are. And that has required some real patience and some real critical thinking about both what I see as the best for LAS and, you know, personally for my own kids versus what the SAU needs and the other districts need so we can, you know, hopefully move forward. I found this a really challenging thing personally. And, and while I, you know, understand it on the whole, it doesn't make it always easy. So I guess that's just one thing I, I feel the need to point out, that there, there is a bit of a tug around and you certainly see it, you know, you'll hear it in, in our community about people's frustrations over those things. But we are still a full SAU and we are connected to these schools and dependent upon one another quite a bit.
Yes.
Yep, more of an observation there. One of the things I want to point out is the schedule requirements of being a board member. We meet fairly often between our board, the joint board, and then if you serve on any committees, these meetings are not always late afternoon, evening. They, you know, it's very difficult to accommodate all the schedules. So there are times that require midday when you may be otherwise committed to your workday or have your son around. Do you have some flexibility to accommodate those schedules?
I do actually, just based on the whole COVID situation, I work from home. My job is pretty flexible in itself, so I definitely have more time. And I will say, probably six months ago, I wouldn't have said that because my husband had a very demanding job that required him to travel quite frequently. But he has taken a new position about six months ago, which allows him to be closer to home. So that also helps the situation quite a bit.
Great, that's good to hear. Given that this is a temporary position, are you interested, and I know it's hard to say with any definite answer, but are you interested in applying your learnings if appointed to the, you know, being on the ballot in March for a longer term position? Or are you looking sort of just to help us fill this temporary bridge?
Honestly, I look at this as a very unique opportunity to be able to gauge whether that is something that I could do. I think it's something that I am very interested in. And as I mentioned, I just wasn't able to do so previously, but it's definitely something I'm interested in looking forward into the future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have a question?
I do. Hi Barbara. Thank you for your interest in joining the board. We greatly appreciate your enthusiasm and involvement here. My only question really is, do you have any prior board experience, either public or private, that you would bring?
Yeah, so I'm on the PTO board. I don't know if that counts. I also served on a, like more social type club for the Seacoast Mothers Association. So no official board to this magnitude, but certainly for like social type clubs.
That's great, thank you.
Welcome.
Do we have any additional questions for Barbara? Barbara, thank you. We appreciate it. What we're going to do now is bring everybody back into the public forum. The board will discuss this and then we will take a vote on an appointment. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Okay, Rhonda.
So I brought them off a hold, but I'm going to sit them back out into the audience right now. Did I throw too many people out? Oh, I put Beth out there on accident. Let me bring her back in.
She doesn't want to come back.
Sorry about that, Beth.
I was going to look forward to it.
Okay, they're all in the audience.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, for the board, comments, discussion, thoughts, all the above. After that, then maybe emotion.
Greg, I'll go ahead and get started if you want.
Please do.
Okay. So I came in today with a fairly strong opinion and a strong feeling one way and I've actually shifted over the course of this meeting tonight. I really strongly believed, especially given everything that we're facing right now, that we really wanted someone with prior school board experience coming into the board. And the fact that Ellen was willing to volunteer to do it, I was really intending to strongly endorse her. And Ellen and I do greatly appreciate everyone's involvement in, in volunteering for this position. There wouldn't be a bad choice among the three of you, I'm sure. But at the end of the day, I was really swayed by Anthony Lang's presentation and back and forth, both in terms of his enthusiasm to run for reelection come next March and his involvement in wanting to drive the board forward, more so than just being an interim position, which is what we really fundamentally needed. And again, I was strongly intending to come in here to endorse Ellen for that role because I think that that was fundamentally important. But I think given the, the back and forth of the three candidates tonight might be shifted.
Yeah, I have to second that, John. Obviously, I wanted Anthony, I, I was one of the ones that proponents to say, you know, you should consider this because I know you're considering looking at the board as a, as, as an elected position. This is something that you could try, you know, get involved with early. And I, and I know Anthony's passion is just without limits. Let me say though, three top candidates, this is a great position to be in. It's a tough, tough vote for all of us and we're blessed to have each and every one of you to, to consider from. And it just, it, to me, it, it, it's just such a strong feeling of community when, when people can step up and even in the midst of these times and uncertainty with everything going on with, with the known demands of this position, we have now three people coming out to apply for it. That speaks a lot to me and it just, just very thankful about that. I appreciate it.
Jill?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with what they both said. And I'm not entirely sure which candidate, I'm ready to, which candidate, which person I feel most strongly about. I'm thankful to all three of you for expressing your interest. You know, I was in a very similar position a few months ago and it was exciting and daunting. And I really liked the idea coming in knowing it was temporary, which, you know, on one hand gave me a selfish out if it didn't fit, but also gave me the opportunity to learn and feel it out, to know if I'm going to consider making it a longer term opportunity, you know, should I get elected. I, I think both Anthony and Barbara really are understanding of the challenges that we're facing right now. And they see it constantly as, you know, members of the, current members of the LAS community. But I also am often intimidated by what I don't know when I come to meetings and the procedures that I'm not familiar with. So having Ellen to help provide some of that guidance feels like it So having Ellen to help provide some of that guidance feels like it could be a real asset to us. So, you know, I'm not really helping in one direction or the other on that, but I agree that, you know, we have a difficult decision, but we're lucky to have that difficult decision right now.
So where I stand, I have a couple positions here. One is the long-term observation of the board. As Jill, you pointed out, both you and Jason are new this year. John's term ends at the end of this year. I'm not sure if John is going to run again or not. I am up in a year. Jill, you've just indicated you may or may not run. You're not, you still are somewhat on the fence there. So my concern is with Anthony and Barbara, their lack of board experience. And with the times we are in right now, and they're very challenging, as we all know, there's something to be said for having, in this case, Ellen on board with her prior experience. There's a lot to learn there. I think Jason, in this regard, you're right now the biggest one impacted by this decision because of the uncertainty of both what John will do as well as what Jill will do, and not to mention that this seat we're filling tonight will also be an elected position. So there could be a new board member there. So I do lean towards the experience quite a bit here. I think it could be beneficial to both Jill and Jason in this case, especially Jill, if you decided to move forward. The fact that someone wants to continue on and run in the elected position next March, I'm not as hung up about that, or I'm not on that like a couple of you are. That doesn't bother me if someone does or doesn't want to do that. Jill, I think you said it well. This is giving you a good idea of whether you want to move forward with it or not. And I think there's, you yourself are in a unique position like that. Maybe as we get going closer to the end of the year, it just might be too much. So I'm not as hung up on that as others are. But I do think, and I strongly feel that with the experience Ellen has, it could really benefit our board right now. We are going to be entering a budget season here that'll be very challenging. We're going to have taxpayers who are going to be very unhappy that schools aren't being used to their fullest capacity. A lot of money goes into the schools, and I think budgetary experience from somebody is going to be huge for us. So that's my position here with this. Nothing, there's nothing wrong with any candidates. I think I'm looking at this from a long-term perspective of the board and getting through this year as challenging as it is.
Greg, can I ask a question? How many seats are up for election in March?
So next March, the seat you're in, which was Mark Lane's, his term will end. John's term ends in March, so it's up to him whether, you know, that's up. And then Greg Marrow's term, or the seat we're filling tonight, that has one more year, but that needs to be elected. So we have three seats available coming up in March.
Okay.
That's where my, that's where I see the experience from Ellen being very important to us right now. Because we could technically go into next year's board with really three new board members.
Yep. And if I understood you correctly at the beginning, in the event of a tie, the select board appoints a position?
That is correct. I do not know, I do not know the process. We would have to look into that, but that's what happens.
So I might just make a comment to my fellow board members that we consider that. I don't know, I don't know the processes, if the select board has the opportunity to fill the position from, you know, anyone, or if they're limited to these three letters or how that works. But let's consider that and the time aspect of that, that we want to have control over who we work with, to the extent feasible, and that, you know, knowing that there will be three seats available give, hopefully, these excellent candidates an opportunity to consider re-engaging if, you know, they aren't so appointed tonight.
Jill, I agree with you. I would like to make the decision tonight. I also think it's our responsibility to make that tonight. But if we do get to that two-two tie, or we cannot make a majority decision, that is what will happen. And the reason I believe that the select board will come into play at that point is because technically they're the governing body of the town. So, but I agree, I think we should make this decision tonight. I'm hoping we can come to a conclusion this evening.
So, Bill, a quick question for you. I'm assuming that if we do an initial vote and we come to a two-two tie, that we would have the ability to redeliberate and come to do another vote until we either come to a majority opinion, or we determine we're exhausted and we can't come to an agreement that wouldn't be a two-two tie. Bill, are you there?
Looks like he may have stepped away.
So Greg, I'm assuming that we would do a second vote.
I don't see why we can't. Let's put it that way.
No, I would agree with that. And Greg, I fully agree with your opinion in terms of, especially right now, given everything that's going on, experience absolutely matters and would help facilitate, especially where I think there is a disconnect between what someone from the outside thinks the job of the board is, and once they get here, they realize the job of the board actually is.
Oh, I think, I agree with you.
I could not understand. And again, I was, I came in tonight fully wanting and expecting to endorse Ellen, and I don't take anything away from her at all. I think she'd be a phenomenal board member. I think she's a great candidate. I appreciate her willingness to run. Just based on the back and forth between all three candidates, Anthony was my number one pick at the end of that.
Let me, let me say that, when we say experience with budget, this is something that we are lucky to have someone such a professional as Matt Ferrera in the works here. He has been outstanding, and I have no doubt that any of the, anyone green coming in, he has helped me can get up to speed quite quickly. This is not something that we as board members would go, especially the budget process, and do blindfolded by ourselves. This is a process that we would do with him and the rest of the professionals here together. So yes, I can understand the experience portion, but I keep coming back to the essence of what we are and what we're going to be and redefine ourselves as. We're done with the addition, we're done with building, we are going to focus on curriculum, pedagogy, teachers, and you got to ask yourself, who is intimately involved with that? And, you know, who has their finger on the pulse, or who will be able to sense that real time and get real-time feedback? And who has, you know, and that, to me, is, you know, the big question here. We can learn, nobody here can't get up to speed in short order and be a productive part of the budgeting and the math behind this. I urge you to consider the depth with respect to educating our children and supporting our teachers, because that's where we are shifting, where we will be shifting our mindset.
Jason, I agree with you regarding Matt. Matt is phenomenal. And what Matt, what Brett Matt brings to the table for us is just unbelievable. And yes, he's more than happy to make time to show you what you need to do. I agree with that. But I do want to caution the board that while we only control 20% of that budget, it's a very important part of that budget nonetheless. Now, as far as the real-time knowledge, I think we need to take a step back and look at our responsibilities as board members. You're right, we can, we will make decisions or votes based on education, curriculum, teachers that are presented to us. But that's where we have to draw the line. We can certainly ask our questions, we can inquire to why this avenue in the curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. What are we doing with this part of the curriculum versus that? But then we've got to take the vote and step back and let the people who are actually there, and in this case it's Beth, do their jobs, because all we do is set policy. And so while the real-time knowledge is certainly useful, our line needs to be drawn. And, you know, I think that's where with renovation, we've crossed that line. We need to step back, and we need to, as a board, get used to doing that. I do think Anthony brings an interesting perspective as well as Barbara. But I do, I am concerned about their lack of experience on boards. I really am. This is a unique time. This isn't, you know, this isn't a normal time for us. So understanding how business is done, I think is very important for us right now.
Greg, I'm sorry, I missed the earlier question about proceeding with this. You can take a, you can almost characterize it as a straw vote if you'd like, and proceed with your discussion from there. That is certainly allowable. It would allow you to see sort of where you are and then proceed from there. A tie vote doesn't necessarily, on its surface, as a first step, kick this to the board of selectmen.
Right. I mean, that would be truly an impasse to get to that point, correct, Bill?
Yes, it would.
Let me ask the board this. Do we feel we have a candidate we can nominate tonight? Without naming somebody?
Yes.
Candidate on the table we can nominate tonight?
I think we will nominate someone tonight. It's a matter of how long does it take and how many votes does it take in discussions does it take to get us there? But I think we're all committed to coming up with our own member.
Bill, one question.
Greg, does it make sense? I mean, let's get the numbers. I mean, I got a sense of what's going to, what the straw vote will be, and if we make a motion to, for the board members to call out their preferred candidates?
Before we do that, Bill, if we, if someone is nominated and they get the majority of the vote, does the voting end at that point?
Yes. You would have nominated someone, yes.
Okay.
I have to be completely honest with my other members. I am quite happy with what each of these candidates would bring. So I think each of them provide valuable additions that are different from the other ones. So it's not a clear A or B in my mindset. So I am probably going to be the vote that swings, quite honestly, because I don't, I don't know that more deliberation is going to swing my mind in one way or the other. I feel pretty comfortable if any of these folks went forward, that we would continue to have a strong board that is respectful and engaging at our meetings, and that's the goal. So I just want to be quite clear with you all about that.
That's well said, Jill. I agree.
That being said, do we have a nomination?
I'll make a motion to nominate Anthony Lang for the vacancy position, Greg Marrow.
To fill the, Rhonda, do we need to identify the length of time for this? Or is that a fair enough or well enough stated nomination?
It is in the motion. If Jason wants to read the motion from Board Docs, it is to fill the unexpired term of Greg Marrow expiring at the March 2021 election.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Rhonda, thank you. Can I just copy and paste that? Thank you, Rhonda. Where's my board docs? Yeah.
I try to make it as easy as possible for you guys.
Thank you.
Can I get a, is there a second?
All second.
Rhonda, we take a roll call?
Yes, Jason Farias.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
No.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
And John Bailey.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Okay, I'd like to thank all three candidates who submitted, Ellen, Barbara, Anthony, who submitted letters of interest. I hope that you sense the difficulty we had making a decision this evening. I do appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the board. Rhonda, what is the next step here?
I have just brought in Anthony and Mary Non, the school district clerk, as panelists so that she can conduct the swearing-in of Anthony.
Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Anthony. Okay, I'll let you take it over, Rhonda, for a minute.
Actually, I'm going to hand it over to Mary if she's ready.
I'm ready, Rhonda. Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you, Mary.
Do you solemnly swear that you will bear the faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Anthony, solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Okay.
Tomorrow, Anthony, I will be in touch with you, and I will get you in touch with Mary, because you'll need to sign the oath, I believe, and then we'll go from there.
That sounds good to me.
And Anthony, we'll be in touch about an orientation.
Okay, sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now that Anthony's sworn, he can now participate in the remaining part of the meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm going to, Anthony, I don't know if you opened up the link. I believe I had sent you the information for Board Docs for the agenda. That way you can kind of follow along.
Yep, I have that.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be our minutes from August 11th. Any comments, discussion regarding those minutes? I have not seen, seen no comments or discussion. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 11th, was it?
Can I get a second?
All second.
Rhonda, we take a roll call?
You're muted, Rhonda.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
And Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Anthony, you need to abstain, please.
Abstain.
Sorry about that. Okay, next item on the agenda would be the minutes from our school board retreat on September 9th. Oh, we met, September or August 19th. Comments, discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Rhonda, we take a roll call?
Right before that, Rhonda, Greg, excuse me. Is your intention to have a round two of that, that sort of get-together?
Another retreat?
Yes.
You know, I would tend to want to do that.
I would love to just, you know, you know, we have talked about this. I I would love to just, you know, you know, we have talked about this, yes. Okay, you you know what I'm gonna say, I'd love to have an opportunity just to speak our minds with 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 future considerations and. Have that, you know, dedicate some time to do that, that's all I want.
Oh, okay, I see where you're going, um, so that portion of the retreat, we did table at the time.
Right.
Because we were down a board member. So to have that discussion into about recreating who we are and our identity, which is what you're referring to. Uh, Bill and I discussed that and we thought that because we were down the board member. Let's still move forward with that training process that were it was included, so. Um, I would love, it's not that I would love to, I think we need to have that discussion of work session for that. Um, so we can start establishing some of those parameters in the directions we want to go.
Perfect, thank you.
I I couldn't agree more.
It is not on tonight's agenda, but let's plan, I don't see him, I think he's still here, Bill, you still there?
I am here.
Okay, um, did you hear that?
I did.
And?
Back in the room, yes, so you want to try to schedule a time to do that, we have, um. So the only thing is, we have, I think, three, Rhonda? Three retreats in the next two weeks. So, yeah, so so if you, I don't know if you want to come up with a date now. Or we can certainly do that, it's not on the agenda, but we can do it, it's not a problem.
We, if, um, I don't, it doesn't have to be in this month, if we want to push it out to October, that's fine.
That would be fine with us, I'm certain. I didn't mean to hijack the roll call, Rhonda, sorry, I could have, I should have waited for after that, but.
No, you're fine. Um, does anyone have any specific date in October they're interested in?
Anything but Halloween probably works.
You're assuming there's going to be a Halloween. Okay, we won't go there.
Wow.
Depending on the time of the day, Greg, let me throw out the seventh, seventh, eighth, nine.
Um, yeah. Now around election day. Oh, that's November, sorry.
Oh, I'm in October, sorry.
Yeah, my bad.
Yeah, no, Bill, uh, September, uh, October is good, um, seven days. Anytime after noon on those days, I think we could probably, um, at least some of us could be there with you, and I don't know, I I don't want to speak for Beth's schedule, but. But that's, that's mine, which I hope is helpful.
I I'm good, um, later in the day is best, best for me, um, but I can make time.
I will say that I'm in the middle of soccer season, so Thursday is the only day I don't have practices, I'm not coaching, so Thursday night. So that's all I I've got available for that week, Thursday afternoon slash night.
On the eighth?
On the eighth.
I'll make that work.
That works for the rest of you, we can try to pull something together then for Thursday, the eighth.
John, Jill, how's that look, Anthony?
Checking.
That works for me, later is better.
Later is better.
How long are we talking, just window like of time wise?
Couple hour. Hour and a half or so.
Hour and a half to two hours, probably tops, yes.
And mid afternoon is better for me, but I could, uh, I can make something work later on, uh, based on everyone else's schedule.
Good. Okay, Rhonda, and I'll work with you on that, and Greg, and we'll try to come up with the exact time and agenda.
Okay, so to to Jay's question and point, we'll tentatively do a work session. October eighth in the afternoon at some point.
Okay.
Okay, good, okay, Rhonda, can you do a roll call on the minutes of the school board retreat from August nineteen?
I can, Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Farias?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Abstained.
And Jill Swayze?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, reports, uh, financial reports, good eve- good evening, good afternoon, Mr. Farrar, how are you?
Good evening, I'm good, thank you, um, and welcome to the board, Anthony. You have joined in for towards this time as we have just completed the audit. For the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, school year, so. I will be presenting, um, those audit results, um, at next month's board meeting. Um, and that will include, um, you know, our our unreserved fund balance. Um, and and how, what what components, um, were included in there as far as expenditures and revenues. Um, as well as the various expendable trust funds, um, warrant articles, um. And any audit control recommendations, um, I will tell you, um, that, um, preliminarily. Um, we are, we Hampton Falls School District, um, does have an unassigned fund balance of three hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Um, so those are funds, um, excess funds from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year that will be returned. To the town, um, to offset, um, the tax assessment. In broad strokes, um, the what constituted that, um, that, um, funding. Or that that amount of funds that are being returned to the town, um, includes just under a hundred thousand dollars in interest. That we earned on the, on the bond for the new addition, um, as well as fifty thousand dollars. Um, that was unexpended from the gymnasium expendable trust that was, um, voted and approved last year. Um, and then just under, um, two hundred thousand dollars. In unexpended funds from the, the operating budget from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, you know, the, the bulk of those unexpended funds, um, were contributed. Were or were due to, um, savings that we, um, recognized. Um, due to the remote learning for the last three months of the school year. So additionally, I I do want to, um, let you know that. Uh, the Winnicott School District, um, is returning, um, an unassigned fund balance of. Um, just over one point two million dollars, of which Hampton Falls, uh, will be receiving. Um, Hampton Falls is approximately seven or eight percent of that budget. So that, that represents about ninety thousand dollars, um, that'll be returned, um, to the tax, to the Hampton Falls. Um, community to, again, to offset tax assessment. Um, so additionally, we have, um, included the fiscal year to date expenditure report in board docs. Um, and I I just want to run through, um, a number of the, um. Variances or, um, or accounts that, um, you know, may, that may be over budget or under budget. Um, and I'm just gonna go, I've 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 already reported on some of these accounts, but just for Anthony's benefit, I'm just gonna quickly run through a few of them again. Um, so my apologies if it's repetitive, um, but if you go to page one, um, you'll see. Um, you know, there's, on the second to furthest, um, right column is available budget. Um, you'll see that salary certified staff, um, is under budget by approximately forty six thousand dollars. Um, this, you know, this represents staffing changes. Um, you know, you budget for a certain position and when you, and when we hire or, um, you know, or maybe a teacher. Has a advances a step, um, or track advance that we're, we're not aware of. Um, that that can sometimes, um, be the cause for that variance, so in this case, we're recognizing, um, you know, a. Slate savings, um, whereas, uh, if you move down the page to special education, you'll see that. Uh, in the professional services account, we're over budget by just over eleven thousand dollars, um, and this is for. You know, our our contracted services in special education, so that could be a psychologist, uh, OT, PT. Um, those, those services that we contract out, um, special education, um, you know. Can sometimes be, um, a variable expense, um, as we, um, it is. You know, we're budgeting a year out and it's based on student need, um, which is determined by their, um, IEP. Um, if you move to page two, um, you'll see that under the improvement of technology or improvement of instruction. Um, tuition reimbursement is over budget by just over two thousand dollars, so that's, um, tuition reimbursement for our, our teachers. Um, who are taking college course for credit, um, all t- all of our teachers or staff who fall under. The C, um, teacher's CBA, um, they're entitled to course reimbursement, now that doesn't mean that we budget. For that, um, for that maximum number of courses, so in in many cases, we under budget based on historical averages. Um, in this case, um, you know, we budgeted for four thousand dollars and, um. We've expended six thousand dollars, um, thus far through the year. Um, so they've, that's over budget by just over two thousand dollars. Um. And that can vary year to year depending on, um, you know, whether the te- our teachers are looking for professional development. Um, if you move to page four, under our buildings departments. Um, you'll see our supplies account is over budget by twenty three hundred dollars. Um, this is, um, primarily due to the increased costs for, um, you know, disinfecting and cleaning. Our buildings due to COVID nineteen, um, I will say that we will likely recoup, um, a good portion of those costs. Um, we're submitting all those COVID nineteen specific costs to FEMA, um, for reimbursement and. Um, assuming those are approved, we will recoup seventy five percent of those costs. Um, additionally, under buildings, the equipment account is over budget by thirty two thousand dollars. Um, and this is due, uh, this is really a misnomer, um, we're just moving money around. Um, so as you know, we had budgeted for the replacement of our refrigerator freezer, um, which had end, reached end of life. Now that's being withdrawn from the, it's, um, building maintenance expendable trust. However, it, it's expend, it's it's expended in this account and then it'll be reimbursed by the trust. So once we receive those funds from the expendable trust, um, that account will go back, um, to a positive balance. Um, similarly, on page four, you'll see our lawn care account is over budget by fifty five hundred dollars. Um, and this is, this is a case where, you know, we we budget out, you know, twelve to eighteen months in advance. Um, you know, we get cost quotes from contractors, um, we, we changed contractors, the, um. You know, we, the the lawn care, um, the landscaper that we previous used, previously used, um, was not available. So, um, when we went out, um, and received quotes, um, it came, it came in, um, more expensive than we expected. Um, we also have additional lawn care needs this year due to, um, the expanded. Um, you know, outdoor learning area that we've, we've added to, um, to the campus. Um, you'll see under transportation, we have large available balances, you know, of two hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And forty four thousand dollars, um, those, those accounts just haven't been encumbered yet. Um, we do anticipate fully spending those accounts, um, we are, we are fully utilizing our bus contracts. Um, you know, we we do, however, expect to see some savings, likely in athletics. Um, field trips, um, those accounts depending on how the year goes and. You know, and what occurs when it comes to athletics and field trips and those, those kind of outside of school activities. Um, finally, I'll just, I'll just note one last, um, account on, on page five. Um, you'll see health insurance, we have, um, we have an available balance of ninety eight thousand dollars. Um, again, this is, this is a situation where we we budget based on our current staffing and what their selections are for health insurance. At that point in time, however, come June open enrollment, they have the option of changing their health insurance. We also have new staff that, um, you know, due to turnover, um, where a replacement could conceivably take a different health insurance. Plan or no health insurance plan, um, that that would affect these numbers, so in this case, it worked to our favor. Um, and the new, the the new, um, elections came in, um, at, you know, approximately ninety eight thousand dollars less than what. Um, we had budgeted, um. So that's, that's, that's the expenditure reports, um, you know, kind of the the variances, the major variances. Um, and Anthony, I'll just point, I'll just, you know, let you know that when we have our orientation, we'll, we'll go into this a little more, into a little more detail. And then I'm happy to review our expenditure reports, our revenue reports and the budget process on a one to one basis. Um, probably not in the same office, but via Zoom, um, you know, at your convenience. I'd be happy to answer any other questions in regard to the expenditure report.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, I just want, for my clarity, so when, how, the the summation of the the budget for fiscal year. What does the fiscal year end for this, for this budget reporting?
So this, this current bud- expenditure report that I just reviewed.
Yes.
July one, so July one of twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty one, so it's this school year.
It's for this school year, okay, and then at the end of the day, any, you, the cumulative funds that aren't deployed. Or are used, I should say, by law, have to go back to the town.
Correct, so and any unexpended funds and then any revenues in excess of our estimated revenues. And then any unexpended warrant articles, like the gymnasium warrant article or interest.
Yeah.
The, like, the bond interest, that money is, um, you know, is pooled together and that, that constitutes the unassigned fund balance. Which is then returned to the town of Hampton Falls and that's used to offset, um, the tax assessment. And when I say return, we're not cutting a check, it's all.
Yeah.
It's all electronic, so, um, it's all on paper.
Question, Greg, is it typically, is that, I mean, this is over four hundred thousand going back to the town, is it typically that large?
No, but as Matt pointed out, we've have, we have some anomalies here, first of all, that three hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong here. A hundred thousand dollars was of interest we earned on monies, um, that were part of the project.
That's correct, and that we also. That we were not allowed to use, so that the interest had to go back to the town.
So, so that three hundred and forty now comes down to two hundred and forty, we had cost savings in, um. Uh, at the end of the school year because we weren't in school because of the pandemic, so, and I'm not sure that dollar amount, but if, let's say it's forty thousand dollars. Now we're getting down into the, uh, an average, if you will, Jay. Um, about what we do return back to the town, now the one thing that's not deducted, at least in my calculations there, and Matt, of that three hundred and forty. Um, is that net after our trusts have been funded or is that gross prior to the trust being funded?
That is net, that is after.
Okay.
Trust have been funded.
I would say to the school board during election season, we should put a flyer out that, uh, just denotes the tax impact of. The frugality and the good work of Matt.
Well, you know, and and we typically do that at the, um, during that season as well as our deliberative and also too. What he said, on top of that three hundred and forty thousand is another eighty or ninety thousand, um, of our win a kind of portion, so now it's up over four hundred thousand dollars. So, so I think it's a valid point.
Thank you.
Matt, have we voted on the expendable trust, building trust yet to move that money or will that come here in the next couple of months?
So you, um, you had voted on, uh, I'm, 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 yes, you, I believe you, I will verify it.
Okay.
Um, but I believe that you voted, um, to it, to it, to withdraw it back in the spring, but I I will verify that.
Okay.
Certainly, if not, then we bring it forward to you.
It it rings a bell, but I I just want to make sure that we've already gone through that process because it's a lengthy one. Um, the second question I have, Matt, if, um, under the healthcare. Um, line item, i- if needed, we have money in our healthcare trust to help offset, correct?
That's correct.
Um, and that's, and I know you're going to provide those, um, amounts next month, um, I'm I'm thinking because that's. I'm, I'm thinking because that's new, it's probably minimal money at this point in that trust.
Right. So I believe we funded it with um, $25,000 this past year.
That's what I thought. Okay. Um, the last question I have for you, Matt, um, it's not.
I just want to expand on the health insurance. So we, we're not over budget on health.
No, I understand that. No, I understand.
Okay, but one thing that, that, you know, that as we go into the budget process that. We can um, leverage is we could potentially under budget for health insurance. Have those funds. Available in the expendable trust. And that's one of the benefits of having that trust is that we can use it as a hedge. Where, when we're budgeting. So, um, so that might be a good use, um, you know, of that fund.
Do, do you have a dollar amount in that fund that we should strive for before we start doing that? Or do you want, is it something you play by year each year?
Well, I think it's dependent upon the, the budget condition and the economic conditions in a given school year. So. You know, de- depending on what the other, what the other, um, you know, drivers are. Um, so like, so for this, for this year, for example, um, you know, we have some economic conditions. That, um, you know, that might. Might, you know, be a situation where we'd want to reduce the budget. Because, um, you know, the town, our revenues at, at the town level are likely decreasing. People are struggling. Um, so we might want to be, have a lean budget and, and reduce it by that amount. Um, you know, there might be a year that we have a significant guaranteed maximum rate for health insurance where. So an increase in premium, so we might want to bring, bring it down on one of those years. Knowing that sometimes when the axles come in, it comes in lower than that. So, you know, it's those type of situations. Um, you know, when. You know, we see periodic increases in, you know, our retirement, New Hampshire retirement um, system. Um, I'm, I'm kind of um, telegraphing in a budget issue that we're going to have this year. Because the New Hampshire retirement system is, is increasing rates by 3% across the board. So, um, that's a significant budget hit. So that's, that's, um, that's going to affect all of our budgets. So, so yes, it's those, I think it's the, the, the market conditions. Then we will determine how we want to utilize the, that fund.
Um, the last question I have for you, Matt, doesn't necessarily, necessarily pertain to this budget. But a few weeks ago, we had some training and you and I briefly spoke about this and I was hoping you'd share. The answer with the rest of the board. But in this training, budget transfers came up. And John specifically asked if we did line item transfers. And I thought we did category transfers and that's how I answered, but after thought. I found I, I, I think I'm more, um, we do more line item. But I asked you that question and I wondered if you could share with the rest of the board, um, what your answer was to that.
Certainly. So, so historically, there has been um, instances where we have done budget transfers. Um, and that has been at the account level. Um, now that, that's not something that is, that is required. Um, and that, and it's really a philosophical question there. Um, so. So oftentimes, um, you'll do a budget transfer for, as a management tool. So that, um, so, so that the people don't, I'm sorry, so that the, um. School doesn't over extend an account that they think they have available funds in, but really don't because there's another account that's over budget. So it's, it's the kind of an artificial tool, management tool to, to, to keep our expenditures lower. Um, by transferring those funds. Um, I'm of the opinion that I, I want to see what accounts. Are over budget. And, um, so I, I prefer not to do budget transfers. Because I want a realistic view as to what accounts are over budget, what accounts are under budget. Ultimately, it's a bottom line budget. So as long as we don't over spend the total amount. Then, then we are, we're in, we're in good shape. So, since I've been, um. You know, with SAU 21, um, I've really limited, um, budget transfers. That being said, there is a place for them, particularly if there's, um, large overtures. Um, overages rather, um, in which case it, it, there can be, um, it can be prudent to do a budget transfer. So, um, that, that's, that's how we. You know, I, I, I know in the past, though, there has been transfers.
Yeah, typically in the past we have it, that's fine. John, did that answer your question from that day?
It does. Thank you very much. And Matt, I, I philosophically agree with the premise of you want to see where you're. Over budget and under budget by account. I, I think that's great. Um, maybe we just want to highlight, you know, where we stand net to that.
You know, it also speaks to the experience level at the school. So, I mean, we, we're fortunate to have Beth Rossi who, um, you know. Does an incredible job of managing funds at the school level. So I'm, I'm, I'm confident in her ability to, to, to not over expand accounts that shouldn't be over expanded. Um, and we work so closely that there's a very little risk, um, as, as, you know, with that open line of communication. Um, so I, I, I feel pretty, pretty confident that, um, that we can kind of maintain in, in budget integrity. Um, but I'd be happy to, but to your point, I can certainly, um, kind of net it out, um, at the board level for you.
Any additional questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Um, I don't know if we have anybody in the public to comment, so.
Uh, you only have one call in listener at this point. Everybody else has, um, left.
I know her, so she can ask me. Okay, we'll close public comment. Next item on the agenda, continuing business, uh, we have an update on return to school.
So Greg, I'm going to ask, um, just Beth to comment on the first two days. Here and, and then David to say a word about the Remote Learning Academy, since that's been such an integral. Um, part of, of, of making, uh, this model, um, work. So, um, you, you'll hear from Beth and then, and then from, from David on, um. On, on where we are and what the first ta- two days have, uh, have helped.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Anthony, uh, welcome to the board. Look forward to seeing you in this cubicle and instead of in the parking lot. Uh, our first couple of days of school have, uh, have gone really well. A lot of planning, our pods are really working well within the building and having. So many students, I don't know who's, was more excited, the staff or the students to be back here and to be back here together. So the blend of the two has really been quite rewarding and has made, made all of this really worth it. You know. Things are running very smoothly. Yesterday I met with a couple of different teams or pods. And, uh, just to, you know, kind of reassess a little bit day one. Uh, today was even better than day one. So we will get there, we will make it our new normal. And make sure that we get into really healthy patterns of movement and. Uh, breaks outside and all of that. So we were fortunate to have good weather. Uh, so the outside is being used quite a bit, which, which is what we really had planned for. Our arrival today was a whole lot better than yesterday, so we were thankful for that. But our dismissal still needs, still needs work. We know that. Uh, I have asked our local, uh, police officers to come in tomorrow and give us a hand just out on the street, just to keep it safer. We probably have more kids biking to and from school than we ever have before and that brings a whole different challenge. So, uh, they'll be out front tomorrow in a, in a friendly way, just looking to help us facilitate it. And then tomorrow, uh, today we cut 10 minutes off of the time, but I think in my mind it's at what cost. I think a lot of parents are saying to their children, you know, come meet me over here instead. And what we'd really like to do is keep it safe, keep it here. And if we have to stagger that by Monday, stagger it alphabetically. Then that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll give, uh, each half of the alphabet or whatever, or however we deem it to be. Equal, uh, in terms of numbers of cars and buses. Um, we also have students shifting over from. Being picked up to the buses. So we're, we're still making a lot of adjustments. There's no doubt about it. And, uh, the seven months absence certainly has been felt. But I want to thank all of you for your, uh, support with all of this. Because we're all very, very thankful to be here and we're looking forward to really maintaining a, a healthy. Routine within the buildings that we can keep going as long as we possibly can. So, I know I presented this plan to you a month ago with all of the different layers. So, uh, all of those layers will continue to be reassessed, whether it's medically, uh, academically, logistically. All of those pieces, we'll, we'll just keep looking at until we, we, we have exactly what we need in the moment. And then of course, we're always going to be ready to go remote as well. So.
Thank you, Beth.
Can I ask Beth a question? Thank you. Um, Beth, thank you. I've heard it from my kid's side. Um, and, and certainly other than a little chaos that drop off and pickup. It, you know, they don't notice any bumps. So they're happy, they're, they feel good about being there. And I think a shorter day is not hurting them right now emotionally, that's for sure. So one, one question I have heard in the community or one comment is, um, the challenges that people are not. Responding quickly enough with the pickup patrol requirements. Um, whether it be the health screening or I don't know if day two presented similar problems.
You know, actually. Oh, thank you. I, I think it's actually gone really well. I think that has been a very big change for families. You know, when I look at, uh, what mothers and fathers have to contend with, with getting out to work on their own. Getting a, a crew of kids ready with lunches and bags and sniffles and everything else. To add that to the mix, I know would be challenging. And today, I mean, I put a, an email out to parents last night and just said, you know, just remember if you could have this done by eight o'clock. And today went really well.
Great. Uh, I'm really glad to hear that. I was going to suggest, I don't know the possibilities, the implications, but putting in some sort of text system reminder. I don't know if our school has, or, or SU has ever considered something like that.
There is an email reminder.
Not email, text.
I don't, uh, Matt would have to answer that. I don't know if that's possible.
I, I'll have, I'll have to verify with pickup patrol.
Okay. Or maybe it can be something we can just sort of bookmark for conversation at our next meeting. And it's the sort of thing that you could put in place. It's, people are staring at their phones, they're not always going into their emails. And if they got an email, a text reminder, you know, like my, my doctor's office sends me text reminders, you know, everything does. That we could implement for changes of plans, for snow days, for reminder, do pickup patrol today, whatever it is. I think that, that would get more attention than emails. So, throwing it out there.
Beth, I, I have a question, um, regarding the buses. O- obviously, you, you don't have a statistical, uh, I guess credible number at the moment. But when you are comfortable stating that, I'm, I'm curious to see what the, um, usage would be. Per bus of students and maybe if, you know, if there was some way of just. Uh, let, letting folks know that, hey, bus such and such has got two kids on it. You know, if you are considering or on the fence of using the bus, you know, you, you, you're, you're, you're. Your kids could be, you know, have adequate spacing on the bus and, you know, that sort of thing. You know, I, I'm ju- just curious if, uh, you, down, down the way, that might be something that you, you consider to, to alleviate some of the, uh, traffic.
Uh, thanks, Jason. I, I have had a lot of parents reach out and their frequently asked question was. I may have misunderstood the survey, is this permanent? So I did send out an email last night, it's not permanent. If parents need to and want to opt for bus transportation, they certainly can do so. Um, all of our buses have more than two students on it, although the first day it was low, but I think it pretty much doubled today. Um, so I think as parents begin to realize that this is difficult, um, I really need the bus and it's available for them.
Yep, good.
We also don't want to necessarily encourage bus usage, um, because I will remind you that. In order to do six foot social distancing, that's 13 students on a bus. Um, in a confined space, um, which right now we're opening windows, but through the winter, it's not going to be the case. Um, and it's a mixing of cohorts. So all that work that we do during the school day to keep. Um, the various cohorts apart, um, could be jeopardized by having too many students in the bus. So, I mean, obviously, we, we want to, we, we will transport whoever needs to be transported. But, um, I don't, I don't know who necessarily wants to encourage more families to participate. Just from a, you know, public health standpoint.
Yep, understood.
Beth, it's Greg. Um, I, I'm sure you presented this in your plan, I just forget. What happens with the campus at the end of the day? Are we shutting that down completely? Both inside and possibly outside on the playground? I, I really forget. What, what is the plan with that?
Uh, we, we have currently, I, I think that, uh, people have realized the. Amount of incredible work that has gone into planning the school day from 8:30 to 12:30. The social distancing, the masks, the masks, by the way, uh, the kids have been fabulous with them. Uh, they have been a real non-issue. So thanks to all the parents out there that really, really talked to their children about it and worked up some endurance with it. It's, it's, I thought that was going to be a tough spot and it hasn't been. But, um, to, to have. 20 or 30 kids outside playing after school, you know, not socially distancing, no masks on all of that. We, we've actually put that on hold, uh, after school right now, Greg. So, I don't know, I don't know what the future will bring, but it's my hope at some point in time that we can. Re-initiate some student activity after school and, and perhaps some clubs and things like that. We know the need.
Right. Are, are we able to control the public outside of the school at all? To say either we're closed, the campus is closed, or is this not a priority?
Um, it's been great for the past two days. It's my hope that continues. Um, I was here, uh, an awful lot all summer long and we, we had people really using everything, basketball courts, everything. So that, I mean, it's my hope to keep this campus safe from the public during the school day. It's part of my job and we certainly work hard on that as well. So it is closed during the school day.
Okay. I mean, I don't.
I mean, I know we have a lot of college students around and things like that. So, um, we have a very attractive basketball court. And, uh, but it's closed during our school day.
We do, and I, and I don't want the public not to use it. Um, there's been a lot of, you know, sweat and blood and all that put into it. But on the other hand, I want to make sure we can get as much time for our, our students in the building. Um, so to limit any exposure from out there, you know, uh, whatever we need to do, I guess.
Right. I think we're in a good place right now. I think if we all continue to do our jobs, so to speak. You know, and, and make sure that we maintain all of the guidelines that we have. I, I, I think we, the, the inside of the building is working really well. So it's my hope we can maintain that. I think we have to be very careful not to become comfortable with, hey, this is, this is so great, there's no COVID around. Because it's just like a prescription medication, we're going to completely bounce back to where we were if we don't continue this course. Of maintaining our guidelines.
Okay. Any additional questions for Beth? Hi, David.
Hey, everybody. Um, well, that was the big show, the face-to-face show, but we've, we've been doing a lot of work in the remote program as well. Um, I'll just kind of give you the highlights and Anthony, so you know kind of where we are with this. Um, the Remote Learning Academy was kind of our answer for students who desired, um, a remote learning environment for this school year. Um, so what it looks like architecturally is, um, consider it basically a school. K through four, we have our own faculty, we have our own teachers that are offering curriculum. Um, and then when we get into grades five through eight, um, we're actually leveraging remote sections of classes. That are offered elsewhere in the SAU. So for example, in fifth grade, all of our remote. So for example, in fifth grade, all of our remote students are enrolled in a Seabrook Middle School schedule, and they meet with those teachers remotely. Likewise, in grades six through eight, LAS, they're going to North Hampton, they're enrolled in remote North Hampton classes. And Southampton is enrolled in Seabrook Middle School classes. So we're actually able to create a completely online environment for the students who wish to do so. That also helps the face-to-face environment, because if we're limited, you know, to 11 to 13 kids per class, we need that pressure release valve in order to make everything work. So they're really a symbiotic relationship. So, yeah, we built a school in about a week and a half. We've got an enrollment of K-186 students currently. We are letting the dust settle in terms of transfers, new enrollments, all that kind of stuff. We've solidified our staffing, and thank you, public thanks, actually, to Mike Queenen, who we've co-opted as our fourth-grade teacher. He's gotten on board, he's doing a great job. Looking forward to working with him. We've worked closely with Caroline's crew and the directors, looking at IEPs, making sure that our teachers have all the paperwork. And, you know, look, coordinating this across, you know, four or five districts is, four districts is difficult. And we've worked hard, our staff has worked hard in order to make that happen. Same thing with device pickups. We've coordinated pickups across the SAU. Students, I think we're down to, you know, a dozen, a handful of devices that haven't been picked up yet by our students. So we've been working very quickly in order to take care of a lot of these logistical issues. We set up an orientation schedule for our students, for the remote students this week, where they're just doing family meetings, one-on-one with the teacher, just to ask questions, understand what the curriculum looks like and all that kind of thing. Next week, we're going to hit our learning schedule, which looks a lot like the face-to-face learning schedule, obviously. We had to make those two things consistent. Simple things that you would think, like the simple act of taking attendance across four districts at the same time every day. It becomes pretty difficult when you're going across all of our districts. So we've got power school access to all our teachers, and we've made sure to co-enroll our students across our districts. And I'll tell you why that's important. So at the end of the school year, your enrollment at LAS or Southampton or wherever, you're going to retain your enrollment. It's not as if a student is enrolled in a different school and you're going to lose that. We know where the students are coming from, and we have the ability to co-enroll them in a different school. So that's how we've kind of jumped through, jumped over that hurdle. Importantly, curriculum has been a big topic of discussion with our teachers. Thank you to North Hampton. We've been working closely with the North Hampton Unified Arts teachers in order to provide that enrichment for Unified Arts in the afternoon for our kids. And they've been great about setting up choice boards and delivering this curriculum that our kids can consume during the school day. But we've also looked at programming by grade. So we've made decisions on the program, Lucy Calkins, SAS Kids, Raz Kids, for example, at the different grade levels. And we wanted to make sure that they're not only aligned vertically, but that each one of our sections, like both classes in the grade three level, they're teaching consistently. So we really have done a lot of work with making sure that students have the subscriptions they need, have the access they need in order to take care of that work. We've also, lastly, been working on a website where we've got all parent information, handbooks, a welcome video, acceptable use policies, all the logistical stuff that we've been able to consolidate and put on there. So, yeah, we've been busy. The mood is good. And we're looking forward to getting started and getting our feet on the ground.
I think something David said in the middle of that should not go unnoticed. We created, David said, we created a school in a week and a half. And that's absolutely true, as I've watched his efforts, Caroline's efforts with the directors, identifying staff members, Cindy Fagan stepping up to sort of work with this group. And I want to echo something Jill said in her questions earlier to prospective board members. The interdependence of this SAU, without this Remote Learning Academy, there would be no face-to-face in this SAU. We simply wouldn't have been able to make the numbers work in any of the districts without the Remote Learning Academy. Even the small number of your students that are involved, it simply, it simply wouldn't have worked. And the only other comment I want to make is, is that I think if we've learned anything in the last few days, it's how tenuous all this is. We've had, we've had little situations that we thought might be scares brought in by the outside world that turned out not to be, but any of which could have put us in difficult situations at some or more than one of our schools. We've watched Wyndham start sports and end up shut down, not only their sports, but their high school in the course of the last few days. And I think if anything, I've been reminded by my superintendent colleagues of just how tenuous what we're doing is right now, that despite the best-laid plans, it takes one situation involving one family or one employee from the outside that could put us into a whole nother mode. And so we think we have good plans, even in those scares, I'll call them. They were handled very well by the principals involved. They turned out not to be anything. But they put us through some paces on our protocols to give us a little practice in making sure we could implement things and implement them quickly.
Bill, do we see, I don't know how to ask this question, any light at the end of this tunnel? Or are we still very, as you just kind of implied, very precarious and a day-to-day situation?
Yeah, the best way for me to answer that, Greg, is just in terms of this piece that parents keep asking us about, about sort of what's the plan and what's the metrics you're looking at? I mean, we know that we get to the end of December and the FF-CRA expires. And so, you know, some people look at that and they say, good, teachers at the high school or other places will be available then. Yeah, the FF-CRA doesn't actually help them solve their problems. It just says to them that they don't have that leave available to them anymore. I don't know how that solves any problems. But, no, I think, I think this is our reality for the foreseeable future. Right? And we're, I'll say it again, for anybody who watches this meeting, you know, we're one of the few sets of districts, certainly in the southeastern part of the state, that has any face-to-face learning going on at all. And I don't think that should be lost on people. I try to remind people of that when they write to me about what we're not doing. I try to remind them of what we are doing, right? They're, other than, I think it's Newmarket and Epping, and there may be one or two others, I don't think there's, and Hampton next door. There's no face-to-face going on in the southeast part of the state. So, you know, we're, I think we can continue to pull off what we're doing. People are doing it well. Beth's doing a great job. Her colleagues in the principalship are doing it well. They're doing it largely because of Cindy and David's efforts, who've taken that group of kids, 180-some kids, and created a school. And I think that's our reality for the foreseeable future.
Well, I'll steal some of Beth's thunder. She said to me weeks ago, you know, the longer amount of time we could be in the classroom with the kids, or they can be in the classroom with the kids, the more beneficial on the backend this year will be. And so as much time as we can get.
Take it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions for David or our Bill regarding this? Or even Dr. Eric Ilian? I don't see you on the agenda, Caroline, but I don't want to exclude you either.
Thank you, no problem. I'm here, I'm an active participant, listening, happy to contribute at any time.
Okay. If there's no questions, then we will move on to the item seven, new business CIP worksheets. Matt, I believe this is you.
Yes, so this is more of an informational piece. We aren't asking for approval. However, CIP did meet this, earlier this month or the previous month, to review our five-year CIP plan. So this was, so this, the Hampton Falls rep, board rep, was Jason Farias. So we were able to review this plan. And for 2020, 2021, we are recommending the removal and replacement of the gym HVAC as well as the continuation of the LED lighting, which we had started this previous year. We had previously had the HVAC project one year later. However, this current situation with COVID-19 has really highlighted the need to remedy this situation sooner than later. So we've, I mean, we've all shared the concern about the ventilation in the gymnasium, you know, from the beginning of this project. Now, it was, it was lower on the priority list because, you know, we had a number of other projects that we needed to complete, including the addition and the actual gymnasium renovations. However, it's never, you know, we've all, we've all known the importance of providing, you know, adequate, you know, air circulation. And currently, there is no air circulation in the gymnasium, as evidenced by the current use. We are, we are not able to use a gymnasium under the current situation. It's being utilized for storage. There's no, there's no intake of fresh air, no outtake of the old air. And this is, this is not ideal under normal circumstances. And it's particularly dangerous under, with a pandemic, with an airborne virus. So we feel that this is something that we, that's incumbent upon us to address as soon as possible. So we have included that on the CIP. Additionally, for 2021, 2022, we have, we have the parking lot repaving project and the repointing of exterior brick included. I think we're all familiar with the existing parking lot asphalt condition. It's in extremely poor condition, and that's why we had it on the ballot as a warrant article this past year. And it doesn't, you know, pushing it back one year does not lessen the importance. It's just we felt that the HVAC was a higher priority. In 2022, 2023, we have included the changing of the pneumatic controls to mechanical controls on our heating. In 2023, 2024, we have an asbestos abatement and floor replacement project planned. And then the fifth year is 2023, 2024, which is the window replacement in the 1974 to 87 wings. So I will note that we will be presenting this plan to the CIP committee this month at the town hall. However, ultimately, it is the board's discretion to budget for any of these items. And that will, so we will bring these forth as a discussion item during the budget process for the board to determine how to proceed at that point. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to any of these items.
So Matt, Jason?
No, go ahead.
Does the HVAC in the gymnasium pose a threat to the rest of that part of the building? Does it impact air circulation?
No, so it really, it only affects the gymnasium. We have operating HVAC with the proper ventilation in the entire remainder of the building. We just, we just can't, we just can't utilize it now. Now, you know, could we open the doors and get some circulation? Put some fans in there? That, you know, partially helps the situation, but we just don't want to take that risk.
So I understand it's certainly not by any means ideal, but we don't have a safety liability issue that we need to address, given the COVID situation and everything else that's going on.
Right. It would only be a liability if we, if we utilize that.
Thanks.
Anybody have any additional questions for Matt?
Matt, the amounts are just listed under construction. I assume that also incorporates material estimates?
So that's, those are based on quotes
Okay.
that Alan's procured. Now, I will note that the HVAC quote is a quote provided by Ekman. However, we're currently in the process of submitting an RFP to get exact numbers for that. And we are hopeful that we can get a lower rate for HVAC. And we do expect to have that locked-in number for the board's review during the budget process.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, regarding the HVAC, I get the sense, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call it an emergency situation. Is this something we can help, we use the Building Maintenance Trust Fund to help maybe offset the cost? So, and I don't know what the numbers are in that trust. And let's say we have $100,000 there. I don't want to drain the trust, but if we can do it to help offset the overall cost, I mean, that's less of an impact on the town. Is that something that's an option to us here? Or does it not qualify because of the definition of the trust?
Yeah, no, it would absolutely qualify. So those are the types of discussions that we'll have in the budget process as to how, well, first of all, if we want to bring forth the project, but then how do we fund it? So typically, with a project like this, you know, it's a capital expenditure. So we'd have, we'd issue it as a warrant article. However, that, I mean, that's the purpose of the Building Maintenance Trust as well. So we could do, you know, a partial funding from both of those revenue sources if we wanted. You know, theoretically, you could even contribute some funds from the operating budget if that's something you were interested in.
I just, I just have concerns right now regarding budget approval next March and the way everything's are. And it kind of goes to Jason's point earlier. You know, there's a sizable chunk of money being returned to the town theoretically. So as we ask for more money, I just want to be cognizant of the situation around us, which I think we are. The next thing, Matt, I believe the CIP presentation is next Wednesday or Thursday. I can attend that, too. I don't know if you were going. I know Nancy's going.
Yeah, so Nancy will be, will be attending. Unfortunately, I cannot attend.
Okay.
So I believe Nancy invited Jason to attend as well.
Thanks, yeah.
So if Greg and Jason, if you're both available, I mean, that'd be great.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Nancy will be prepared to present both the Hampton Falls and the Winnicottan CIP. But I know in the past, sometimes the board has presented the Hampton Falls portion. So you are more than welcome to do so if that's what you prefer.
No, Nancy will do a fine job. I don't know how you feel, Jay, but I think she'll do great.
That's fine with me, Greg and Matt. I guess just, like, protocol-wise, or does it make sense to, do, should we offer, when speaking about this large sum, should we offer possible alternatives, funding solutions at that point? Or is that something we take care of?
A lot of it is, a lot of that conversation is just dictated on the day, Jay. It depends on how the conversation goes. We certainly can throw that out there as an option. We just want to make sure that what we don't do is make promises we can't keep. But, but yeah, we certainly can do something like that.
I want to impress upon the public and the selectmen that we are intimate, we're very much sensitive to the, I guess, the overall feeling towards, I guess, funding in general. You mentioned that before, Greg. Okay.
the, I guess, the overall feeling towards, I guess, funding in general. You mentioned that before, Greg. Okay.
Any additional questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Okay, next item on our new business is our first read. I'm assuming, Bill, these are new policies?
Yes, this is a group of policies from way back when in the spring that came out of our policy subcommittee. And they are on your agenda for a first read for members new to this process. Policies require what is defined as two reads. The first of these that we're bringing out of the SAU-wide policy subcommittee occur at each individual board meeting. And then the adoption of the policies, the vote, if you will, occurs at our joint board meeting, which is scheduled for October. So they're on here tonight for your information. If, as you look through them, you have questions, you can get ahold of any of us. And we'll we'll be glad to try to answer those questions for you leading up to the joint board meeting in October.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill regarding the policies?
I think I'll save for an email, Bill, but thank you. All right.
Okay.
Bill, do we have non-public at all or anything for that? I don't recall.
We do not have need of a non-public tonight, Mr. Parrish.
Man, does that sound good. Okay, next on is our next meeting dates. We have an operations committee Tuesday, October sixth, our board meeting, October thirteenth, joint board October twentieth, and we have a joint board meeting tomorrow night at six thirty, correct?
We have a joint board meeting tomorrow evening. Assuming I hear positive back from the from the unions. We have a joint board meeting scheduled for tomorrow night to consider the memorandum of agreement regarding the implications of the this this school year, remote learning, the models that we're in. Yes, we'll consider that tomorrow evening.
Any additional questions? Okay, a couple of things. Caroline, I'll come up with a question for you next month. I don't want to leave you out of the conversation.
Look forward to it.
Anthony, welcome to the board. Please do not hesitate to ask questions as Jay and Jill have expressed. There is a learning curve. It's not a complicated learning curve, but it's there. So please don't hesitate to ask questions. There's a lot of resources available to you to learn, you know, how how business is conducted. If nobody has anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second, Matt.
And a rule call, Rhonda.
Greg?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthony?
That's what I want to vote yes on, right?
Yes, you do. Please.
Absolutely.
All right, I have the meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Welcome, Anthony.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you all.
I'll be in touch with you tomorrow, Anthony.
Awesome. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Take care.